I have, it's already advertised that we will be going into executive session at the end of our meeting today. So, that's in place. With that, 10 o'clock, we have on our agenda supplemental budget. I'll open up the supplemental budget hearing. We have our budget officer here. Anne, would you like to give a quick overview?
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this supplemental budget is in regards to the recently signed agreement with the town of Lakeview by law enforcement services. Once we signed that agreement, we had to allow for paying the bills of that whole undertaking. And so, due to the nature of assigning a new fund to this, it requires public notification. So, we're getting the public's opportunity to make a comment or provide feedback on this proposed budget. That these numbers came through from the agreement with the town of Lakeview and also working with the sheriff and the undersheriff on what it might look like for those deputies to do that work.
Okay, so, that hearing is open. Is there any comments on that budget at this time? No public comments at this time. I would say we probably ought to leave it open for a little while. So, we'll go through a couple of the things and close that hearing a little bit later.
Okay, and then we'll do the resolution.
Yes. Thank you very much. So, one thing that we did miss on our agenda, we always have public comment on our regular session. And we do not have that listed here, so, at this point, if there's any public comment on anything other than what's on the agenda, we'll take that at this time. Nobody want to step up and talk to anyone? Alright, so, we got through that part. Next item, I believe that we have a service award pin. Mr. Greer, you want to come forward?
Okay. So, Mary's giving her 10-year service pin to the county today. Although, not all of the juvenile department, she's currently assigned to the juvenile department. Part of that's worked in the district attorney's office and the jail, and now juvenile department. So, it's kind of neat to see some longevity within the county's span, whether it's different departments or not. So, Mary started with us in March of 2018. And she was quickly thrown into the fire, feet to the fire. She gained respect among the youth she supervises, as well as her coworkers and out of the school districts as well. For her passion, her loyalty, and her dedication to the youth that she supervises. We're tied up Mary, part of her team. She's an integral part of our team with the work she does and how she represents the county.
So, I get to speak. Mary, so.
You'd be nice.
Much younger than me. Mary's a great example of starting with the county and being able to work through whatever department our expertise she bring forward. Mary and I go back a few years, and she's 20 years younger than me. I knew her in school, so, the expertise she brings to the county and the comfort for me as a commissioner to be able to sit down and visit with her and talk openly and be able to just reflect on the skills and ability that she has brought forward is very, very fulfilling for me. I want you to know that. We go back a lot of years, so I get a little bit emotional. You're an example of dedication to the county. I go back to the DA, when it's the DA's office and dedication there, into the sheriff's department, correctional office, dedication there. And not any one of the departments have you not been 100% dedicated to that department and to the county. So, with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake.
And thank you for the whole department coming here and support. Appreciate that very much. So, we're going to move right on and, yeah, run them off. You don't want to stay for.
Stay. There's justice to be done.
Stay for computer stuff? So, you know what? Before we get to you, Mr. Brown, I'm going to go ahead and close that hearing right now. We just don't have any, before we get to that.
Sure.
I don't anticipate anybody coming in with them yet, so. Six minutes after 10, we're going to close the hearing of the supplemental budget. With that, then we need to act on the resolution. So, the hearing's closed, no comment was brought in, positive or negative, or any questions about the budget, supplemental budget? So, we will act on, we can act on the resolution.
So, in your package should be resolution number 2018-12. Again, for the new Lakeview Law Enforcement Fund, number 206. And it, this is like an appropriation resolution. And so, we're establishing personnel services, materials and services, capital, and contingency for a total of $328,000.
Okay, so, with that, I would entertain the motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number 2018-12. The 206 Lakeview Law Enforcement Resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept resolution number 2018-12 in the matter of supplemental budget. Any further discussion? And the amount was $328,000. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Carrie, Anne, thank you very much. That one's done. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Would you like to come up to the hot seat?
Please. Bring one, at least one.
Bring your crew with you, I apologize. Yes, everybody from Act 12, welcome. So, what we have is the technical support agreement that we're a little bit behind on. And so, we're going to have this. Legal counsel, have you not seen this at this point?
No, I've looked it over, and it's really a continuation of what we've done before.
Okay.
No changes, but we've been in business with Mr. Brown for many years now, so.
Okay. So, you're in the hot seat. So, did you get my?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, we have it.
The contract services, that page was just basically pulled right out of the contract. In 2016, I guess, we had a change where we started doing telephones, system, security card entry, camera, security, multifunction device support also. And then, we also had the services review. We have Josh as our full-time employee here. We do remote support, so we help Josh out. Basically, one geek can't know everything. My 30-plus years doing this, that's why we work as a team with Lake County and other counties that we support. Each of us have our specialties, and Josh is, he's been awesome, at least working with us, I assume here too. We did go, we are over hours at this point. And we have never charged for work done after hours. And a lot of special projects that we do, as per contract, we can, we just haven't done that. And we haven't increased since, I believe it was 16, even though we increased Josh's salary over here because he's doing a good job. That's about it. Do you have any questions for us? I think the copy of the contract that I sent was pretty much the same contract that we have since 2016, just as a continuation.
Yeah, I went over it, I have, we'll probably go through different, several different scenarios here, but it has been the same for quite some time. And our anticipation, even though there hasn't been no inflation factor in it, is that someday we would get to where our IT costs were coming down. Once we start getting things online, and we'd start, we'd see our contract start reducing. So, with that said, there's some things I don't know that I contract were really fulfilling all the way around. And the monthly reports to Melanie, and I haven't talked to Melanie, are you getting the monthly reports by the contractual thing every month? We're supposed to get a report and updates to the key county personnel, which you manage that budget. I don't think we're getting that.
We're fairly close to every four weeks meeting.
So, I think that can be cleaned up, so. I think that, I just think that builds a good relationship, is to make sure that we're communicating.
Okay.
I think that's something, you know, and that's why I work, Brad, is go through the contract to make sure that we're both in compliance on that.
Sure.
And that the communications work pretty well.
Yeah. And I assume we've worked with Melanie on that?
Melanie is our contract.
We did contract Melanie, but.
Yep.
Official meeting, we probably need to set that up, so we have an official meeting instead of just going over important stuff. We should have an official meeting or a meeting. I'm assuming that's what you're under.
Yeah.
Okay.
The more, when we have our person that manages the contract for us, our IT contractor, the more that that person is in blue tabs. We have departments come to us and different things, the better it is for the board of commissioners to be able to just go up to Melanie and say, "So, what's going on?"
Sure.
She's our administrative assistant, she's our right-hand, so.
Right.
And that's her budget to manage. So, I'd just like to make sure that we're keeping that going the best we can. It says in here that there'll be monthly onsite visits for contract updates, administrative support. So, is that necessary, or is that happening?
It's not happening as often, just because we haven't had to. But we upped our remote support, which pretty much covers that. We've had some definite instances where it's required remote support and more of our time. So, coming down here, we'll be down, be down here again next week as we work on a project, which we'll be doing that night. So, we don't take the whole county, it isn't down during the daytime.
Okay.
Which is part of our fun, but yeah.
So, the contract has that in there. If we're able to be in compliance with that, basically, because we're doing remotely, that's where you visiting with Melanie and she telling us, you know, we don't have to have onsite monthly, I'm in contact with them, and we can consider this remotely the same as a monthly contact.
That would work.
I mean, that's.
That would be fine.
That's something that, you know, a commissioner's not going to be in the trenches on that, but our contract manager should be in the trenches on that. And that's just the way things have grown in the IT world a little bit also lately.
It has.
Yeah. And so, other question here is, is we have traveled down for $2,800 per year, and the next page we have it by mile. We're not paying double.
No, you're not.
So, whenever it has travel expenses, that's referring to what it cost us, and it's taken off that $2,800 until we go above and beyond that?
Correct, that was the original.
And have we been doing that? If not, we haven't.
I've been over every year, I've just never charged for it.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
But, we want to make sure that that is, that we're not double paying, never paying for the services.
Exactly, yeah.
So, the other thing is, within the contract, and you know me, I beat everything up, so that's just the way I am. We pay for a full-time employee $64,000. Today, I believe you guys have taken on quite a few other contracts around. The contract says we'll have onsite 40 hours a week with some flexibility.
Yeah.
Is today's world where that we've gotten where we don't need 40 hours a week, and that can be reduced? And one of your other contracts pick up that difference?
Probably not, because we're already over hours. What's happened in, it's real simple. We were hoping that we could grow, and we don't have that many clients outside of the county here. What we were hoping was happening was we could standardize, but what ended up happening, like in 2016, the technology grew here in the county. Some of the services that we provide have grown here at the county and not, there's things that we do that are outside of our contract even to this day. So, what we have found with new technology that we never thought we would have to do, and we can discuss this if you wanted to. But, those kinds of things added more hours and more hours, and then what we ended up doing, because we can, we started doing more remote support. So, with those two things in mind, that's kind of why we stay where we are. I mean, we haven't increased the contract, this will be for the third year, even though Josh gets a raise every year and we're providing extra support and we need a trap. Well, and I appreciate that so much, but the worst thing for any contractual agreement is, is for somebody to say is, "Well, we're providing that at no extra cost, and we don't really know what's being provided to us." And so. And that's something I think.
It can go sideways on us, is what I'm telling you.
Sure.
For both either party on that, and I appreciate it if you're doing that. But, we also, you know, as a board, we have to look at our cost for IT.
Sure.
And will there be a day that we have to go off for an RFP, is there, you know?
Sure.
And we need to know what actually is being done for us, and that for our contract person and everything. So, I appreciate the comfort zone that we've got into. I think it's just, we have new board of commissioners and everything. I'm doing most of the talking, but a good contract is a livable contract. You have, or he didn't say. A good contract is a good fence between neighbors, so anyways.
That makes sense. So, what we can do, I guess, on that one is when we have our monthly meeting with Melanie, we can go over the specifics. So, what we do, we have an issue tracking system that we use. So, everything that Josh does and that we do remotely is all in there. And actually, the notes that we take to make the fixes on the computer systems, all that information is in there. We build a knowledge base, basically, of how to fix certain things here in the county. So, when it breaks, we can go back and reinvent the wheel on some of this stuff, we have a head start on it.
Well, on our side, appreciate that, on our side, Melanie's been here almost two years now, but there's a learning curve as we have employees come and go and take on different duties too. So, the better things are written, at least in knowledge.
Yeah.
Probably better for both parties.
Cool. So, we can revise, review that each month, apparently. Yeah, and most of the stuff we have in there, how would I put this? It's all geek speak. It's pretty technical stuff, and some they understand and some they not.
Well.
But that's stuff that, it's all information for you as a client, so that's stuff we can review with.
Well, the way that, when Melanie came on, we asked her not to become a computer expert, but to get all the training she can to understand the computer world the best she can. We don't want her to be a computer tech, but for her to be able to understand some of your geek speaking.
You got it, so.
It's okay to laugh, Josh, really.
She's doing really good too.
Yeah, she is. Melanie's awesome, we're good, so, very good. We're getting there, just had to have these discussions to shore up because of, we need to do that. One other question is, is we put together the committee for, what was the committee?
Disaster Recovery.
Disaster Recovery.
Thanks, Michael. I've been pushing that off for other projects, and I'll get on that.
And so, we got to get that done, no matter who it is, we have to get that done because you really pushed for that. And then, I guess, one thing that's really important for the full board to hear, and today's not the time, I don't think. But you need to come point out our liabilities and our potential liabilities, because we have a new board in your world.
Okay.
Whether it's from cell phones to computers to misuse to how you can be sued and all those things that come with IT world. It's just a good educational thing for us as a board, if it's appropriate. I'm not afraid of that being all department head staff meeting type thing, so that. One thing I always worry about is our liability, and in the techy world today, the misuse of computers, cell phones, and everything puts us at a lot of liability. And you very well know it, you've explained it to us several times.
And.
I think, I don't want to pay extra for you to come for just that, but if it's the time that you were coming here for a monthly or a bimonthly, I think that's important for us to be refreshed on.
I know, you have Mr. Bailey here too, you've had experience.
Yeah.
We've been here a back around the block.
We have been, and that's a very good point, and I think, with that said, we probably should do that on a regular commissioners meeting day that Mr. Bailey's here. I think that would be.
We're seeing a lot of that with our other county clients too, so. It's definitely something we're more than happy to come down and work with you on, disaster recovery and worse, but security is a. I'd rather refresh and just look and see what's going on after.
Well, in today's world, we jump around this a little bit, I know it's posters conversation, but we give cellphone stipends, and many people do those for Facebook and this and that. That means you're representing the county at that time sometimes, and exposure becomes a liability for all. And so, there's a lot of things we have to have a repressor course on, because of once you're county employee, it's 24/7.
Yeah.
And maybe today's world's changed where we do this type, and maybe today's world maybe will advise us that's not the best way to go, or maybe it is, I don't know.
We see it both ways. A lot of counties are moving to where they issue a county phone, and that person, the employee, would have to have their own personal phone. And they only use the county phone for county business. And it's up to you.
Well, we've been advised both ways over the years, and it, but things change as laws.
Yeah, that seems to be the new norm that we're seeing now is.
Because there've been a few laws.
Company phone, personal phone, just to produce liability. No, we're more than happy to come down and redo that, and we need to do some basic training, which takes about 45 minutes, so.
I think that would be very good.
Sure. Yeah, great.
Get our HR on board and get our department heads here, because the department heads are the ones that's responsible for the employees' actions and everything, so.
Yeah. Did we get any traction on grants? I know I talked to Melanie about it a little bit, but it is time-consuming, but we do help some of our other county clients on grants. And I know you do a good job on giving grants, but every year, certain departments, emergency departments, emergency services, thinking of Mr. Tagg, and I'm thinking of sheriff's departments taking a go at it, get grants, and there's still money there every year, that goes unclaimed.
I'm told there's a lot of money available on the law enforcement slash emergency services side. I believe on them here that will pursue that, I'm sure.
Okay.
So, speaking of grants, so say that you did grants for us on the law enforcement side. How are you guys reimbursed?
Well, what we do, if we don't actually do the grant writing, you would need to do that. What I offer the county, which I do for our other clients, other county clients, is I'll spend some time with whoever's working on the grant, and we'll help spec out the tech site and meet the requirements from the tech side of the grant. And that usually takes me two to three days to do that, and I'm more than happy to do that as part of a contract. We'll just go ahead and help you do that. Problem is, is it has to be somebody that's approved by the law, by, say, the sheriff's department or emergency services, like, and it has to be approved, and then they have to go through, file the papers representing the county, and I can't do all that stuff. They have to go through and do all that. So, with another county, we just finished another grant filing, it took me a couple of days, and that person's really good at it. And we put it together, and they got the money, and there's money left over every year at the state. I can't remember if they had a million six or seven to give out to counties. And a lot of counties just think, "Oh, we can't get it," and they don't put the effort into it, but 130,000 to 150,000 bucks worth of grant money's well worth the 80 hours or 120 hours it takes to write a grant, be my thing.
So, whenever one particular grant I checked into, that was the challenge right there, is having the county personnel that had the 80 hours to put in, put that grant together. Because of our law enforcement, we're busy working and developing, dedicate that 80 hours to put in to the grant writing, was the challenge.
Yeah, and they would have to, if it was somebody outside of law enforcement, they would need to have a liaison that they could work with and help in that process. And then, what we would do is come in and help them meet the tech specifications and go through in the dollar amounts. But I brought up Deputy Tagg just because the disaster recovery plan, some of those funds can be used for updating the radio systems, updating networks, updating stuff that we could put in the disaster recovery plan.
So, hypothetically, if we were to take our economic development person and have them designated by the sheriff's office, they could write that grant?
Are they part of the sheriff's office?
No.
Oh, yeah. They would work in conjunction.
They're not even a county employee, it's a contract position.
Oh, okay. Well, they could work in conjunction with sheriff's department. Meaning the sheriff has.
I'm just trying to be creative with how, we don't have a grant writer on staff.
Oh, okay.
You know, that's what, we've talked about over the years, and that we have never witnessed, that's all we have. So, we try to use whatever personnel we can. So, we have a contract position for economic development. Generally, economic development has some skills on grant writing. I don't know if that could fit or not.
I don't know why not. I can tell you, the other counties, I tried to get some of the other counties that are getting the grants, just ask them if they would share, and they really don't want to because they want that grant money, right? There's competition for the grant money, so I didn't expect that, I thought, "Oh, yeah, we share everything else, why wouldn't you share that?" So, yeah, that would make sense to me, right?
So, I think, I'll bet you that Commissioner Albertson's going to be turning your ear quite a bit to see what's in there.
Yeah, and so, I didn't believe you're too late this year, but that's something you start planning for next year. If I remember it.
There's always grants, though, that we do by June or.
Exactly.
There's always something that we can do.
Yeah. And the average on this one was somewhere between 130,000 and 160,000. And so, I've gotten pretty good at figuring out what technology we can and can't put in there to meet the grant. So, I mean, and feel free to call me anytime.
I really think more that some of those grants would fit very much, especially with the radios have to be changed over, they keep changing that over from digital or they're going to digital or whatever, to our areas that we don't have good coverage, that maybe we could enhance that.
Yeah.
There's, you know, it all sorts of fits the techy world, there's a lot of things I think could fit, just haven't been able to get the grants applied for.
Alright, so you have emergency services, so if they had a fire or earthquake here or wherever, where are we going to set up shop? If something happens to the county building, and those are all things that can be part of that grant, so.
Sounds good.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. I love this guy, and he knows that. A full-time employee, you have a $64,000, but that, I'm assuming that's not only wages but insurance and that sort of.
He's got very nice benefits, yeah.
This is just my personal opinion, is I could see some of that remote support management dropping and maybe. management dropping and maybe moving over to your full-time employee and just because as he grows in his knowledge, I think that needs to be moved. So, um, one other concern I had was I know there's special things that you guys do besides what's on our contract, but we went over almost 30, $25,000 over in the contract and it would help me to have line item on where those expenses go.
Sure.
Because when you're going over 30,000 over your contract, to me that's a big red flag, especially when it's just there and there's nothing supporting what that was there for. And so, um, but I'm more than happy with Josh, he's always ready and willing to help me, he knows my tech capabilities are that of an infant and so, but he's always willing to help me. And so I want to give kudos on Josh's side, but I do have concerns on the other things, so.
And, I mean, basically, we have eight people that provide support and the reason is, like I said in the beginning, one geek can't know it all. Is Josh growing? Yeah, but can he do total security, total servers and all of that stuff? No. Can he ask that of one guy? No. And that's why in the world today, we have so many people that are specializing in so many different technologies that it would be hard for one guy to say, yeah, I can do all that stuff. If they tell you they can do all that stuff, have them talk to me and I'll ask them a few questions and then we'll find out, because you just can't. And that's why we do the remote support. So when we have an issue where we have a catastrophe or something like that, or we're doing specific security or server issues, you don't, you guys don't see that, but we see it on our side. And I can give you line items and break out those hours and do all that stuff for.
I think it would be better just for protection of you and us.
Sure.
No, just.
And that's where I was going. Be in our monthly meetings with Melanie, yeah.
She goes through Melanie. On you going over, generally when you go over, it's an emergency situation and it's generally approved through Melanie or through.
Correct, yeah, so.
You don't just have an open checkbook for that.
We do not.
And I understand that, but coming in brand new, it doesn't look that way, that's all.
Yeah, sure.
Rely on your contract person there, she, that's where I was going, make sure that we have that dialogue so that whenever a commissioner wants to ask that question, she either writes to Melanie and says, why is this going over here?
Sure.
That communication is key.
It is, and we do, before we do anything like that, we talk to Melanie, so she knows what's going on.
Only other comment I have is I know there's a certain amount of hallway grabs. We have to rely on Josh to keep those at a minimum, do the work orders and go through our contract person so that you, Josh, doesn't just have any department head or any employee grabbing Josh anytime and putting Josh in a not a good position. She's the go-to person on work orders and I know that's not your problem, but it has to help be governed by Josh and that's very important to stay with.
She establishes that.
Yeah.
Establishes a record. Exactly, that's kind of all I need and I need to maybe make that more clear.
So if we're running into beyond the allowable hallway grab, you talk to Melanie.
Yeah.
And Melanie has supported the board to give that correction.
In the past, you know, probably about three months here.
Most of the time, we don't even hear about Melanie, we'll address it, but if it goes beyond that, anybody's going to argue, the board will address it.
Yeah.
That's only another thing I have. So I guess what you're wanting is for us to act on this contract. We've brought some things up, we could possibly talk to the board here, we could act on it and amend any, if there's things need to be amended after Melanie and Mr. Brown are able to look at that, is that okay to do?
The base contract is okay with you, but if we can come back and.
There's only one thing that I, just curiosity, I'm new here, and both of us are.
Just to meet you, by the way, Mark.
Brad, this is Jim.
Nice to meet you, Brad.
You know, Josh.
Um, just being, being new to this and just kind of going over the contract late last night and this morning and just kind of seeing, you know, how far we were over the last go I think, I'm curious what the board's thoughts are on RFP. And it's not at all critical, criticism of the work that you guys have done and I think you guys do a great job. Josh is a rock star, but just in keeping in mind the budget here, we've got a lot of constraints and a lot of things on our tape, on our plate and just trying to really crunch those numbers down and I just, I'm just wondering if maybe that's something you want to discuss.
Well, I think it's something to discuss, I don't think it's for discussion with our contract person in front of.
No, I, but before we, before we sign this and, you know, I think it's something I just want to, I'm, I'm not entirely ready to, to make a motion on this contract, that's all.
Okay. I, I appreciate your thoughts. I believe that where we don't have to sign contract right now, that tightens the essence.
Sure.
And if we were going to consider going out for an RFP, what we would do is maybe amend or not sign this contract for the two-year or play this two-years as long as.
I think we have until July first. Yeah, it's one year renewable.
One year renewable.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, our contract right now is we're basically without a contract because it's dated, am I correct?
Uh, well, we had it signed contract last year, but I don't have the right date filed.
Did we, did we do one sign last year? The one I found is a year old.
The, the one from 2016 to 18?
Yeah, that's the last one I know.
That was the one that. It was signed on May 16.
Yes.
May of 16.
Yes, this one was signed on May of 16, but, and it is set to expire, I believe on page four, term of amendment till June 30th of 2018. So that was a year ago.
Yeah, that could have been the one last year.
And so I was just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, I may have missed it because what I did was just updating it to the correct date, it would be July 1st, 1924. So, I don't have the original signed one, I just have the one I sent you guys.
Okay, and Melanie researched, I didn't, we did not find one.
I just have a signed one on my computer for last year, for last year, so I don't have one that.
I don't have it with me.
Yeah.
We do have one on the computer that would be current covering up until.
I don't remember the, to be honest, I don't remember the dates on it, so.
So we may be without a contract or, yeah.
But if I, I have auto renewing there, I can't remember. Some, some, some are renewable, if it's not, then we may not have contract.
Yeah, sometimes it's auto renewed and sometimes it continues from the month.
Yeah.
It's not in there.
Okay.
Should have had probably in there, it's either party brings anything forward, it might be expensive one year. Our butter is really just. So back to, to the question that Commissioner Williams had is where I was going on the assumption that we were without contract right now technically, and that we had to at least have a contract between now and June 30th. At the minimum, to protect your site and our site both. So that's where I was going to go, was to go ahead and do the contract fills in.
Okay.
With the assumption that if you can show that we signed one, then.
I, to be honest, I guess I don't remember the date.
But that would, that would give time myself unless something came forward. I'm not, I'm not ready to go out for an RFP right now, but I think if we have absolutely contract between now and June 30th, there's time.
Okay.
For you to meet with commissioners individually, to give a full update of what you bring forward.
Okay.
What, what you have and the uniqueness of going out for an RFP.
Sure.
And because of you basically would have the insight to be able to apply for that RFP.
Correct.
Because we'd have to use you to format what we don't have for an RFP.
So there's some real uniqueness to this stuff. So I'm trying to get through this meeting and get us under contractual agreement and give you time to.
I, I really appreciate, you know, the way you're, where you're going with that, but the thing is, is the technical support agreement that I received from Melanie, the more recent one, it says that the agreement is entered into as of July 1st, 2019. So.
Yes, we would, we would.
I have a contract in front of me basically to, to put us into a contract until June 30th.
Right, we would have to change that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just saying, there's, I can't, I can't act on it, contract is not in front of me, that's all. So, to, to have a contract on June 30th, that's what I'm saying.
So it's as simple as change the date with the contract.
If you want to do that, yeah, absolutely.
That's simple.
I'm fine with the contract itself, it's just debates would have to be amended if that's the direction the board wants to go, until, until we have one until June 30th. Because like now, we don't have.
Until 2019, we'll make this contract.
Go ahead, Melanie.
So would you guys entertain approving this contingent upon an earlier start date? You could start sooner and then have it go for two years and three months or something? Would that be fine?
Well, the question is, is do we want to go out for an RFP? If we want to go out for an RFP, we don't want to go into contract for two years.
Right, okay.
Because then we wouldn't build well for an RFP. So the question is, is if we want to consider an RFP, we could go into this contract until June, give us time enough to work on it.
And then June, we can decide whether we're going to do an RFP or not.
Correct.
I would say we might make that, I may.
Because we need time there.
But we have to.
And then respond.
Yep.
So, yeah.
But right now, we don't have one, have a contract, so it kind of.
What works in place at least until June 30th, so.
So I'll make a motion to accept a contractual agreement between Lake County and Actit and correct the date on this from today's date until June 30th, 2019.
Hold on a second.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So.
I have already asked you, the content is okay.
The content is okay.
So we have a contractual agreement. I encourage you to visit with each.
Josh is excited.
Each commissioner individually.
I can do that.
Yeah, we just need to set time. If I ask some questions, I'll call you, I know where I'm at, so.
Yeah, in a half minute, I have some time. I think I'll maybe take a break for lunch or something, but.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Even if our lunch money, do.
Yeah, that's fine too.
All right, any other updates from you?
That was it.
We've covered everything.
We're kicking you out of here.
We're kicking you out of the, we'll be downstairs.
Okay.
We'll be downstairs.
Thank you, sir.
You have a right. So, thank you. Thank you guys very much. So our next item, Mr. Hawk, you're next on rock crush, or rock purchase in the Atleti Crushing Service.
Okay, the issue here is purchase 12,500 tons of graded medium chip rock and 4,000 tons of three-quarter mined aggregate from the Atleti Crushing will be working in Harold Miles' pit. Harold has already acquired their services to work in his private pit and we'd like to add on to that so that we can fill our chippings, chipping material needs for the next couple of years. Exemption to be added to Rule Number Nine.
So, and as follows all our rules, Mr. Bailey, obviously, Kevin's worked with you.
Yes, it does and it's, it's very similar to the contract that we passed previously for President Brock who was out by Christmas Valley.
Correct, yeah, correct. This, this material will supply more or less half of the North Lake region of our road miles of asphalt surface treatment. So roads that are in Silver Lake, roads that are in Arrow Gap, Fort Rock Highway, that asphalt, so.
Entertain a motion.
I, I will make a motion that we accept the proposal in front of us for the rock crushing at Harold Miles' pit in Fort Rock for the amount of $233 for the rock. Royalty to the landlord of 25,000, I think is included.
At least you didn't use cuss words, it's 258,300.
Did I say two, what did I say?
$233.
$233,000. Apologies.
Close to that.
I did not use cuss words.
I know.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept rock crushing at Harold Miles' pit, total cost including royalty, $258,200. Any further discussion? Let the record show that we're doing this under Rule, is it Rule Eight?
Nine.
Rule Nine, I keep getting them screwed up. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
When they sign, just forward to me that out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, on our agenda, we have backup generator airport bid recommendation. Before we get started, Dave, Sheriff, are you here for, Sheriff, are you here for the supplemental budget?
Um, I'm here for whatever.
Oh, okay, the supplemental budget's done and all ready to present?
Actually, I'm here for the executive.
Okay, we're, I would say we're probably roughly 30 minutes away.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, backup generator airport, you gave us some information on that.
And I brought it up to you guys yesterday on the, on our grant, our airport utility upgrade grant. We went out, we didn't go after a contract for a generator, we just went, basically we're going to just purchase one, so. We went out and got four bids, as I said, two bids, they didn't meet our criteria, so I threw them out. They didn't meet our criteria, so I threw them out and I had the propane one, the diesel one, we went with the diesel. It's going to benefit the airport a lot.
I'm good. Entertain a motion, all right?
I'll make a motion to accept the backup generator airport bid of $43,988.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the quote bid of $43,988 from Generac?
Generac Industrial.
Industrial. Further discussion? Mr. Bailey, for the other ones that didn't qualify, we're all in our guidelines to throw those out and take this one?
Yes.
All right.
I don't ask him, he tells me.
I'm just getting it on record.
It's always good to go through.
Just getting it on record. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, David.
And then a little update on, we talked about the car access yesterday, the car reader that we're looking into, well, we're supposed to bring it to you today, but we don't have enough time to figure out the information we need. Being that we're trying to work it into this same grant that we're doing this, because it does qualify under our grant as far as electrical and what we're trying to upgrade. So we're, we've got with Regional Solutions, they're working on, or Business Org, excuse me, well, same thing. Business Org is looking into, they're going to do amendment to our, our grant and then we'll bring it to you and then we'll sign it and then we can put, we can get. bring it to you, and then we'll sign it, and then we can put, we can get those dollars for that car to access to put it into the grant, it's all under. But we have, and we do have the extra money in that grant to do that. So we're just going to give it here back from Business Org again to move forward with that.
That would be awesome.
Very good. So the next item we have is the possible use for the 100 year celebration in man camp this morning. I brought Dave in and Perry Freeman from the Red Rock site. We had a discussion whether or not, if the first option is for them to use that site. They're not absolutely sure with the matrix of contractors and everything. He's going to do some further checking. The other option would be too, is if they weren't, if they decide to use it, but they were excluded from it during that Labor Day weekend. So they're checking on it. I don't think they're going to want to use it, but before we pass the board to make a full decision on that, we'd offer that up first, so have to follow up on that. With the weather, actually, they're getting pushed back, so their construction time, they're going to possibly bring more people into different times, so. You have any more to add to that?
No, I have to do.
Yeah, pretty good. But I told board I'd.
They're interested in it still, because they're not sure what their, what their schedule is like to utilize that, you know, to utilize it, so.
And so, and we have our director from the Fair Board, we had our Fair Board meeting last night, and the Fair Board was quite appreciative for that to be considered, and was very positive about that, to be a good thing. Do you have anything further to add?
Good thing? No, it was very nice, yeah.
Okay, next item.
All right, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. So, real quick, sorry, I'm in, we're going to order this probably today, so.
Make it happen.
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Don't let the door get you in the butt, make it happen, and you're going.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
The next item we have is landfill operation hours, I know Kevin stepped out. I didn't think we'd take any action after a meeting yesterday myself, that we were still working on some different thoughts and ideas, if you want to table that.
I have, I have a few thoughts on it. I've been thinking about it and praying about it a lot last night.
Well, let's bring the department head in if we're going to.
If he's still here.
I think he walked out that way.
Pardon me?
He walked out that way, he all did.
She's sitting right there.
Okay, all right, well.
So she is?
He's seen on the agenda, go ahead with your discussion.
Should I get that?
She's sitting there, so.
What's that?
Well, Christie's sitting out here, so I'll see Kevin's out.
If Christie or Kevin want to come in, they're still there.
Is Kevin still here, here talking about the land? Oh.
David, are you still here or not?
I was just having some things with the sheriff.
Where I thought we were on this was table, but James has some thoughts or ideas, I want to make sure and get him back in on that.
Yeah, you know, we discussed a lot of things yesterday, we talked about service hours, and we didn't want to take Sunday off the list because we were concerned that we'd be cutting service to some of the individuals that use Sunday, and they depend on Sunday, which I think is, is a legitimate concern. But then we talked about raising fees to a minimum, and I'm not going to say that's not something that we should entertain in the future, but that's not the proposal that I think that was brought before us. I think our landfill operator is coming before us asking for a tool that he can utilize to keep his people, and to keep his people happy, and to keep his people working, and to give them what they need to do the right job. And it's, I'm not, I'm not seeing a justification for raising fees, which I think is going to cause even more of a backlash with the public, versus a Sunday that I think the 40 people that use it on a Sunday would, I mean, I can see the backlash from there, but then we talked about the same time, after we say, oh, we can't do this, I don't see a cut in service hours. I see a Sunday being closed and a Monday, and I understand, like, we talked about the levy that was put in place, and people not wanting to pay more, but then we talked about raising fees in order to pay for an additional person out there, which I'm not saying that isn't something we need, but right now, we're having trouble even keeping the people out there that we have. I think, I think we're looking at a problem in the future if we don't, if we don't address this. And we had another discussion on another item yesterday about delegating, taking $6,000 and putting over for, to compensate people for gym membership. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable with not giving our department heads the tool. I understand we've all gone out to do landfill, we've all seen the landfill, we all kind of seen the operation, but our department head and his people are out there every day. They're the boots on the ground, this is what they're asking for, and if we can't deliver that, we can always go back and change these hours. We can extend the hours during the week and allow people to have, have access to it after work hours, if that's something we want to do, but if we don't try something, I'm concerned, we're going to lose people, because these people haven't had a single weekend off for quite a while. And I've discussed this with a lot of people, they have actually no problem with that, not, not having access to my Sundays. Some people do, and that's perfectly fine. But again, this is where I'm at right now, is I, I would make a motion on this honestly today to accept as presented. If we need to go back and change it, that's fine, but where I'm at today, I was uncomfortable with just tabling it. I'm not comfortable with that.
So, you can make a motion anytime you would like, and if that's a motion, you can go with that. So appreciate what you have to say. I'm, I'm not there at my.
And everyone can make their decision, I didn't really state where I was yesterday. I think everyone else kind of did, and I was, I think, I think it just, when someone comes to us and they have something that they really need to manage their people, I feel like it's, we need to take what they're saying seriously, and take their perspective seriously as well. I was speaking to a friend of mine who actually used to serve on Iraq, and he served understanding the crystal, General Stanley, the crystal, who was the general for all of the Afghan forces, and I think, I believe it was 2009 to 2010. And one of his philosophies was, in leadership, was that you don't come in and say, we want you to do this, 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 and this, and it's our way of the highway. He would tell his men, we've got a job to do, here's what we need to do, exercise your best judgment, and then report back to me. And we found a huge increase of loyalty and trust with his people, they took ownership in the projects and in the mission. And I, I was praying about this, and I was talking about it with my wife, and this is just kind of where I'm at. I think this is the tool that our department heads ask for, and so I will make a motion, I'm going to make a motion that we accept it as, as presented, by the road department that the landfill hours be changed to the proposed hours that are on the sheet in front of us, and that is my proposal.
One small clarification, it's not road department, it's general.
So, general fund. Yes, thank you.
Do I hear a second? There's no second, it dies for lack of a second. Appreciate what you had to say. I did not want to get into the weeds too far today, but I will say.
I don't want to make a comment, though. I have no intention on tabling this. Matter of fact, I'm working with Ann as we speak on how to get the fourth person, because they need a fourth person. It's not people, and, and so.
That was where my understanding was yesterday, is kind of where we were going with it today.
I never, I never mentioned tabling.
I, I mentioned tabling, my definition of tabling is to give us time to work on this. Prior to this being put on the agenda and a dim mark liaison there, I did not bring this forward. Kevin brought this forward himself. I worked with Kevin with some proposals, reorganization. He pushed the limit, brought it to the meeting. I was working the same as you, Mark, on this. He elected to bring it to the Board of Commissioners. We had the discussion. Tabling, to me, means is we, we tuck over the operations of landfill in October. This is an option. Other options is, we may decide to contract it all the way back out if we can't afford to do it, and our cost of our employees are so high, that's an option. Tabling means if we look at the options we have, and what we do for our taxpayers out there, now then you, you show me another general funded department that comes close to paying for itself. There's an obligation for us to put services on the ground with the taxpayers' dollars, and sometimes that means taking those taxpayers' dollars and supplementing a department. And that may be what this takes, is that we take taxpayers' dollars and supplement one that the revenue stream doesn't fully carry in. The road department doesn't create enough revenue on that special revenue fund to operate itself, that takes taxpayers' dollars through the federal side. So this one here does not always have to, the revenue completely covered. We're putting services on the ground for the public. At the same time, we've got to take care of the contractors, try to take care of our employees, and, and try to make this work. This is our first shot in 20 years of operating landfill. There's going to be some growing pains, there's going to be some things come up. But let me tell you, my belief, and Kevin knows this, it needs to be a standalone department, a general fund standalone department, with a department head that's dedicated, has the time to do it. Kevin is trying to take care of a landfill that takes 60 hours, and a road department that takes 80 hours.
That, that's correct. That, that statement right there that he just made is absolutely 100% correct.
So, so we're having some growing pains, we're having some, some anxiety, but as a team, we can pull this together and get it there, and we can make it for the best services for all.
What I want to tell you is, by the end of the week, I'm going to have something for you, and if this doesn't work, I'll have something else. But I'm not letting this go, I'm, I'm going to make it work for you and for everybody, so.
Christie, you had your hand.
I just wonder where the money's going to come from for a fourth person? When, when the county budget officer and treasurer in one has said several times, there is no money. That's why the road department isn't going to get the 250,000 this year, and.
She's working on it right now.
Well, she's the budget officer, you have a budget committee, and you, the commissioners, recommissioners are part of that budget committee, and we prioritize as we go through, and sometimes if we prioritize, and putting that fourth person on there is where our priority is, then we go through the budget process, Christie, and find the money the best we can.
And you guys told me yesterday, both of you, even, even if, even if we do do the Sundays off thing, that if somebody takes a vacation, or somebody's sick, or somebody quits, you guys are picking up the slack, no matter what. And so it doesn't fix the problem completely by having Sundays. You guys are still shorthanded, you're still out there all the time with three employees. That's what you told me yesterday.
It's a matter, we're going through some growing pains, we're going to get there, and we're going to get the services for all the best we can. And, you know, there's a cost to that sometimes, and that's where you're going, is let's figure out what that cost is, let's see if that's a proposal that we can run through the budget committee and through the reorganization part of it. That's where I've been working, and you've shown a passion that you're really working on it, that's great, but that's, that's, the evolution is, at the same time, Kevin and Christie's having to cover to try to make this work as we're moving along in this direction, so. We need to set it up the best we can. Our first shot hasn't been working, so we're six months into it, going to take another shot, appreciate you stepping up on that.
So it'll get all the additional money out of the taxpayers, correct? Potentially?
General, general fund has, has paid on the landfill for years.
Right.
The landfill closures at right around 600,000, that's all come from general fund. All the monitoring's been general fund. All the things, we've repaid the road department for work, general fund has subsidized the landfill for years. It's not out of.
I think the last figure I saw was like 168,000 dollars from general fund to the landfill, but people need to realize in this county, taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer, when anybody went to that landfill, not one penny went back into this county. It went to California, to Adair Brown, who was the contractor. So not one cent of their money went to that landfill. And that is a fact.
Well, that, that could lead into quite a discussion, I'm sure, is that David might have fuel and other things in California. The contractor.
The contractor took all the revenue.
The, the contractor was based out of California, yes.
Right, and took all of the revenue. There was no revenue to this county, not one taxpayer's penny went to this county in that landfill, so.
I guess I'm trying, I can't see the point you're trying to make, I mean, because it's not that way now, right?
That, that is what he's been trying to fix.
Right, and that's what we're doing.
And accomplish, to keep that money here.
We enter into a lot of contracts that aren't local contracts.
Well, I'm not.
That's probably why you go out for a bid for contracts.
It doesn't matter if the person was in, in bend, the contractor. The point of it is that none of that revenue came to this county. And the whole point is to make the taxpayer dollars stay here and come here, and not go to another contractor, so. And as stated in the past, the contractor that was asking for renewal was going to increase the rates, so. And he has worked hard to try and keep the rate at it is, so.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next item is the wellness committee program. I did receive one phone call, it was a message that I wasn't able to follow back with it, guy that was sitting in the audience yesterday was very upset that we would consider to use taxpayer's dollars for a wellness program for county employees. Did I bring that forward? I'm not going to bring the name forward. I did get that call. So I don't know, it's listed as action consideration. I have my, my concerns on that, I may be the odd guy out on that, I'm not sure, but.
I have a question.
Sorry?
Well, wait, just a second, I will get to you. I've tried to put a lot of thought into this, in different things. I believe in wellness. I, for several years, have tried to encourage people to look at, for other government entities, I mainly DOC, and I don't know for sure the school, but generally, it's not a cost to the taxpayers, it's usually borne on, on the employees, and there's, a lot of it has to be self-driven on wellness programs. So our wellness committee has been presented a little bit way over the years, we've done wellness side, we've paid quite a bit for Rob and Rose two times, maybe three, I think it's two times, come here, we get a fair amount of participation, I don't know the impact of it, just sort of, for your guys' information, that probably wasn't presented to you, that over the years, we have paid a pretty good amount of money to bring Rob and Rose here and actually speak, so. Just turn that out there.
You did some of it, I was asking for what that is. What was that, and you mentioned 6,000?
That was a proposal from the Wellness Fitness Support Program Committee. They basically, Melanie. They basically, Melanie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, the idea is to budget a certain amount of money and to encourage people to get a gym membership or at the fitness center or wherever. And if they, if they attend 10 times per month, they get basically like a stipend, something to help them with their membership. And it's paid out of that amount of money that we allocate for that.
Well, well, clarification.
To encourage just people to be healthier and.
It would be paid out of each department.
Or each department, yes.
So it would affect my budget?
It was allocated out of each department.
Okay, so it would affect my budget if James and I wanted to do something?
Yes.
Okay, can we opt in and out?
Well, if you don't attend 10 times per month, you have to pay for your membership in full. It just only applies if you.
Or can we next year say, no, we don't want that?
Well, you and James don't have to do it.
Yeah.
Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to do it at all.
But can you opt in and out?
Yes. But the idea was to like, I, I believe was to take a certain amount of funds from each department that wanted to participate in it and, and have that money budgeted so that if they are going to attend that gym. And if they don't, and they don't, they only attend nine times, well, they don't get the help and then it reverses back.
So is anybody going to make a motion to accept it?
I'm not, no.
No. I'm sorry, I've made fun of the force service forever for all those programs. I would be a hypocrite if I said, oh, let's do it. So, yeah.
Okay, so moving on then. Transfer ownership of the pool bus. That's not a swimming pool bus. So we have no review on this vehicle. Committee is making the recommendation to take the bus that we purchased and donating that to the senior center. And I believe that fits their nonprofit that we're able to do that. I'm just checking with legal counsel, heaven speaking. And with that, transfer that, if it's within the guidelines of nonprofit, is that we would still be able, we would have no ownership or liability for insurance, but we would be able to borrow that for any county offense if we need to use it as road department for a road tour or something like that. Best example. Melanie is like sort of covering, any further discussion? Mr. Bailey, can we, can we?
So it's not going to the Chamber of Commerce, it's going to the Henderson?
No, it's going to the chamber.
It's going to the chamber, we purchased it, 2000.
Yeah, I believe you did say.
Chris, you guys better check me for all timers.
We already did.
These part timers.
Well, it was one we got from the senior.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion.
Well, if, we, we have to make sure.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned, the Chamber of Commerce is a private entity.
They're not a.
Well.
Aren't they? Well, I don't think it's a government entity.
No, they're nonprofit, we could sell it to them for a dollar though, didn't we?
Yeah, you could do that.
So make, make a motion, we're going to sell it to the Chamber for.
I'll make a motion to sell it to the Chamber for $1. Did you hear me?
Yeah, I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to sell the pool bus to the Chamber for $1. Further discussion? Mr. Bailey, I'm sure that fits all legal guidelines.
It does, I mean, the weird thing is, and the reason why it seems odd is that we have the ability to sell surplus property, to describe it shortly, when it makes sense to do that. But just donating property to a private entity, we don't have the authority to do that. Or at least that's, that's, that's my concern is that.
Well, I apologize, I'm the one that.
So are we legit, so we're going to sell it?
Yes, it's odd, if you sell it, you're okay, if you just donate it, you're not.
Because it's so outdated, it's under BYR policy that we, it's basically no value to us.
Yes, we would be doing this under Contractor Review Board Rule 7, which allows us to sell surplus property without going out to, on the sale.
So your motion, you consider that?
Yeah.
And seconded?
And seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We want to frame that dollar.
We made a dollar today.
Melanie, just note that we did that under Rule 7.
Rule 7.
Okay, OHA agreement. This was tabled last meeting. Answered questions for Mr. Williams was answered. Mr. Bailey's reviewed it, I don't believe he's.
I don't see it in front of you, but. Would you like to copy that again?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is fine. Yep, so would you entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the amendment, the Sixth Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority and our governmental agreement for the finance of health, of mental health substance use disorder and problem gambling services agreement. Number 153127.
Oh, seconded. His motion's been made and seconded to accept agreement as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You know how I decide which ones.
I was worried there was going to come out there when I was trying, so.
I'm never going to live this week for some. Meeting minutes, we have several there, so.
I didn't want to add an addition plus. I forgot to put them on the last agenda and I didn't want to, I wanted to follow our addition rules, so I.
Oh, the meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Oh.
I didn't want things to be last minute addition when I'm trying to like exude getting things in my mind.
Making sure people are doing additions.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we've cleaned that up a whole lot.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the board making sure that we only allow additions that really need to be. And our ICAR department has started following our policies a lot better. Thank you to the board and all of you. Entertaining motion on these minutes?
I make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the minutes of 35, 36, 37, 319, and 320 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Ronnie, did you have anything?
Um, no.
We don't allow additions.
No, but it kind of made a question now about this whole selling thing. So the whole selling thing, if, if we had like the old grandstand lights and all that kind of junk that we have out there, if we sold it, can we do it that way instead of doing the whole auction thing?
So I will let you offline visit with Mr. Bailey on that. And we set a policy where if Dave Furman says it's of zero value.
Right.
Then it can be given away to anybody. If it has some value, then it has to follow a process. I'll make sure Jim and you, you two visit on that offline.
Okay, super.
It makes more economic sense to sell it without going to public bidding than.
Okay.
So the public bid is going to cost them.
Well, if, if the public bid process will be more of a burden to us.
Okay.
And just straight sale of surplus property.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But check with me where you want to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so openly, no. We have a very, very short executive session. Okay, so I, I would like to take a short break before we go into executive session. So we're going, we're going to take a break until roughly, I'd say 11:30, because I know it lasts that long. And then we're going to come into executive session and it'll be under 2A.
2A and 2H.
And 2H, yeah, okay. So a break, we'll come back in.